This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call the order January 11th, 2023, Monterey Select Board at 6:00 PM. All members are present here in Town Hall. I guess we'll jump right into business. The first item on our agenda is the police chief contract, which we've received changes back on. Then, I think the biggest change is the length of the contract that's being requested, but we'll just go change by change.
The overarching question I have is if we accept the changes, do we think, I mean, maybe after we look at them, we need to consider whether we have to send it back to council? There are a few changes that I suspect may warrant that, so.
Yeah, and if we do, we can just have her look at those changes since she's already reviewed them.
Yeah, the whole thing.
We just highlight those changes.
Right.
So, the first change you just said is going to be signed in 2023, not 2022. And some wording changes really enter into the following contract pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, I was amended. My only question on that is, is that the Mass General Law that we didn't accept? Remembered earlier?
There was a Section 79, I didn't remember.
Because we're of the understanding that Monterey never accepted.
Chapter 41, Section 108, that's not one I recognize.
So what law do you think this pertains to?
Well, last time this came up, I was of the understanding that Monterey didn't actually have a police chief law. We just had, we have a police department and then we appoint a police chief?
Police chief law, did you say?
This one specifically is about employment contracts. This is not one I've looked at before. Employment contracts for police chiefs and fire chiefs.
Okay.
I haven't looked at this one before. Have you?
No, and I think just the way it reads, it, it's not something we have to accept.
Right.
She, uh, last time the lawyer appointed us to different towns except like a police chief, by a police chief Massachusetts general law, weak police chief or strong police chief.
Right, weaker or strong.
But we had accepted either. To our understanding, I thought, we just had a police chief.
A weak, right, which is just, just runs parallel unless you do adopt it.
Right.
Every town has a weak unless they go for the strong.
That, that makes more sense.
It looks like just, we have to have Donna's opinion, but just quickly skimming it, it basically is sort of like making sure that nothing conflicts with anything else.
Yeah, but other than that, it's, we're fine with that change. Unless there's any objection.
Mm-hmm.
Then there's a couple whereas statements, which I think are pretty standard. It's just saying that the town wants a police chief and the police chief wants to serve as police chief. Is there any objection to those changes? They did go ahead and delete a good chunk of what we had written and wrote. Now therefore, the select board acting as the chief executive officer of the town and the chief hereby agree that the following terms and conditions are stated here and and subject to statutory references that shall be incorporated. Hereby agreed and shall be incorporated into this contract. I don't think they deleted anything substantive.
I don't think so either.
Are we fine with that?
Yes.
Okay, so more or less we're fine with that, whatever we'll call the preamble. We just want to double check that, that Mass General Law references, okay? Length of contract.
So I just want to say, because I know that we've just discussed concerns of trying to get the contracts running on the fiscal year. I happened to run into Brian today and I asked him if he, like, if he would be okay with our altering the term of contract to make it instead of three years, January to December, two and a half years, January to June, so that at the end of that, it would be coinciding with the new fiscal year, and he said he was fine with that. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I just wanted to see if he was okay with it, because I know we talked about trying to get those to line up.
And the reason for having them line up? Does that simplify it then?
It, it seems to me like if we're going to have budgetary discussions and go to meetings and get his salary, having a contract come into effect after town meeting means that we know whatever contract we go to him with, we can actually, we've actually appropriated the money for his salary.
Yeah, I'm fine extending it. I'm fine keeping it all the fiscal year. I want, I would be in favor of deleting the automatic extension of the contract. I mean, I'd rather have a longer contract, but I don't,
Yeah, I see.
I don't like an automatic extension. It's like at that, when the contract runs out, the town and the police chief will have to determine whether or not to renew, but.
I also was not sure about the nine months of mass notice.
Yeah.
That's a long period of time, and I, I mean, I totally get that you're not going to renew someone's contract, not that I'm foreseeing that, but if someone were to not renew, they would want a chance to, you know, an adequate chance to look for a new position, but that's a long period of time.
What if we come back and we say, the initial term of this contract shall be for a two and a half year term commencing January 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2020?
Six.
Six, is that what it is?
Twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, and then delete the automatic renewal. I mean, nine months is a crazy long time.
Do we want to give him a, a different number of months? Like, we heard that he wants some warning, but I, I don't know what an appropriate number of months is.
Well, it's just giving us nine months to tell him that we may want to renegotiate contract. How long has this been in effect?
This is new. I don't think that would, that wasn't in the previous contract.
We didn't, we didn't have that at all.
That wasn't in there.
This is a totally new thing. So he took the contract and sent it to the, the council, the, the chief's council for Massachusetts, Chiefs of Police.
I didn't, I don't think it's, I mean, I don't think it's in the best interest.
So what do you, so what do you think it's going to be, six?
Some months of notice? I would just let the contract run out and then renegotiate. I don't, because what this does is it's an automatic extension.
Oh, I see.
You know, if, if there's no notice given.
All right, well, that's kind of the way it should be.
I know, so basically this is just not an automatic renewal, is what you're saying?
No, this is. Well, it is automatic.
This is.
This is automatic, and we're saying we don't want an automatic.
Well, I'm not, but I'm just saying that it seems like we have the option anytime we want to say we'd like to, up to nine months, to renegotiate your contract.
The interesting thing is that it also extends it automatically for a year.
And it gives them the option.
So that would go from year to year?
But it doesn't, it doesn't really give us, it, it limits us, because if this isn't in here, when the contract is expiring, the town and the chief can renew the same contract or renegotiate a different contract. But if this is in here and no, and nothing is done nine months prior to the end of the initial contract, it just automatically extends it without any.
But it looks like it extended for a year. Is that how you read that?
Yeah.
Garrett's just re, did he, did it renew every three or every year?
Well, it was one year.
So you're saying that with nine months out, we have to tell them that we're good with the contract?
But also if it's going year to year,
Yeah.
we'd have to tell them three months into a year that we were.
Right, that we're not.
But we're not, I, I.
I would just believe it. I mean, I just think each contract should be its own agreement and the next contract should be its own agreement.
I think that would be the same.
Yeah.
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 I'm, I'm, I'm with that just.
I mean, I personally would probably be okay with at the end of the contract renegotiating for another three years instead of year to year, but that's then, not now.
And I don't think that's what this wants.
No, no, I don't think it is either.
This is saying for an additional year, but it's, I would just rather have that. So if we're all in agreement, this, we'll just read that the initial term of this contract shall be for a two and a half year term commencing January 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, and that would be the end of the section.
Yeah. Was there anything else there? Before there wasn't, right? I had it up before, but I closed it, so. It just ended there, right?
Well, no, actually what it said was extension between June 20th, 2023 will require a new contract.
Right.
So we could put back in extension beyond June 30th, 2026 will require a new contract. That's probably the way we're supposed to have it.
So that's clearly stipulated that we, we know a new contract will be required.
Okay. So this, these neck, the next section on page two is compensation is more or less all related to the extension to now make this a two and a half year contract, or it's requested three years, but as we're saying, a two and a half. And it gets a little.
The item two is a little confusing to me.
So.
I, I, if you prefer.
Well, the point being, when this was just a six month contract, we just had a set rate, and now it needs to include uh, COLA increases or other increases, right? The problem being, we didn't actually agree to 85 oh eight nine for the first year. We agreed to pay at a rate of 85 oh eight nine for the first year, but COLA will come into effect for all of our employees on July 1.
Oh. So we'd already have a, right?
So it should really be 4,254, 450 for the first six months, and then the next year it will be, it just gets really complicated really quickly.
Okay, so, but I'm just like trying to figure out what they were asking for before I decide whether I'm okay.
Oh, on part two?
Yeah.
On part two, they're basically just asking for COLA.
That's the first one, but, but or any percentage increase with either any of the regular police officers, but in rank?
Yeah.
That's, like, so if we increase one person, we have to increase him too?
By the, by the same rate.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm giving him a raise, I'm giving him a raise. I'm not giving him a raise because I gave somebody else a raise.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think in department, it may make sense, but plus, but I don't know that it does here, so. I mean, we could just offer, we can just offer the first point, and each succeeding year of this contract, the chief shall receive the same salary stated above plus.
Any annual increases approved by the town or department?
Non-collective party employees.
Yep.
And delete the second part.
And delete part two.
Um. I still, the wording of the first part, yeah, I don't, I think we're on this, I think it makes sense. It's just the wording needs to be a little bit careful.
Do we, do we need to say the, the half of the 85 oh nine, 89 for the first six months of this contract? And then each succeeding year, the same salary stated above? No, the same yearly salary of 85 oh 89 plus any annual increase? I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I mean, I think we're on the same page. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll, I mean, because unless I'm mistaken and unless I'm also opposed, we want to pay at this rate that we agreed upon for the first half year, but on July 1st, when COLA comes into effect, it will be this
plus that raise.
Salary plus COLA, and then the following year it will be
that salary plus COLA.
So it's just really a question of wording. So maybe we'll, I'll ask Donna or something, just what the best way to word that is.
It makes sense to me. Does it, do you have any?
It says, uh, forty-two for the first six months and the same annual salary of 85 oh eight nine plus the cost of living for fiscal year 24.
And then again for fiscal year 25.
For future fiscal years.
For future areas.
For future, yeah.
And then it only just gets confusing because the next clause that they added in, in each succeeding year of the contract already deals with that. So I don't want it to get, to confuse.
Oh, no, I thought we were putting it down there. So have the, the, here it would read the amount, the correct amount as sorry for the first six months.
For the six months.
And then under e, in each succeeding year of the contract.
Oh, I had it up at the top.
But did he?
That works if it's, you just say right after the department, and it's, it's the end of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all headed in the same direction. It's just a question of wording.
Perfect, perfect.
So we'll figure out the word. Then at the end of job description, at the end of duties on page three, the lawyer just added, in addition to the foregoing, the duties the chief shall also, who those state in the job description, the chief attached here to his today and incorporated by reference here.
Also, I noticed that there was a mess up in the numbered job duties. After fifth, it should say sixteen instead of fourteen again.
Yeah. We'll do that. I'm not opposed to the job description clause. We just need to make, we just need to review it in conjunction with this then and.
We have one, because we, you know, you just hired it.
We did, we did just approve it, but we just need to look at it and actually attach it, right? If we end up attaching.
Well, I, I don't see any harm in attaching. It probably makes sense. It is the job description we hired him for, so.
Yeah, should be part of the contract.
All right, so we'll accept that. Page four, for professional development, they just listed a few of the meetings, like the, a few of the conferences. I don't see any problem with that.
Neither.
Okay, we'll accept that.
I think this will be puts us in charge of all the meetings.
And he made the sign up for it?
As far as.
Just gives me the need to go.
So, it's not like, yeah.
Ooh, that's a good point. To, we, we agree to budget and pay for travel too. Melissa pointed out the international one can get pricey because of its venue.
So we could keep the New England and the Massachusetts Police Chief Association and the Western Mass one, and then just strike the international one if we want.
I, I feel like if Brian, my feeling would be, if Brian really thinks it's important and, and has some reason in a particular year to go, he should come to us and say, here's why I want to go, and we'd probably say, okay, let's budget it in.
Yeah, I mean, the way that if it's put in here, it kind of, it makes it seem like it's pre-approved.
Right, yeah.
So why don't we ask Brian if he's even,
Interested in that?
If he's, if he's interested in the international thing, and if not, then that solves that. We can just strike it, and if he is, then we can have that discussion.
He can mention to me that if he would be willing to concede.
All right, well, we'll double check with him and then probably strike that.
I mean, it might be interesting for him. On the other hand, I, I'm guessing some of the international things would not be very blinkered to us.
Here's the next one. So we had a little discussion before about letting or giving a vehicle to the police chief versus letting him use his own private vehicle. We agreed to keep both in, and the request now is to permit the police chief to use the town provided vehicle for personal reasons and during off duty hours since the chief is on call in the event of an emergency. And then additionally, to make, to acknowledge that is exempt from a vehicle fringe benefit value pursuant to IRS tax regulation.
So that's so like, what, he's on, he's off duty and goes
Does anything.
Dinner.
Yeah.
I'm just imagining a scenario, and there's a call that he has to go to. So instead of going in his vehicle, because he, he would take the town vehicle. But that would mean he'd have to go, and he's not allowed to carry other people in the car. So it would only work if he was dragging that vehicle sans passengers.
Uh, I don't know that having other people in there would be prohibited if it's for personal reasons. I think that should basically just mean we basically don't own the vehicle. It's just he can do what he wants.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to see, first of all, you don't want to even sit in the front seat. Right? You got locked, you shotgun, you got a computer sitting next to you, you got a screen here, you're, it's not like, oh, let's go out for dinner.
No, I hear you.
So I think a personal thing might be something where it's just him doing something.
I, I just don't, I don't think that that's what this is, is getting. I think that.
I have no problem with that, that whole paragraph.
Letting it, letting it in.
Yeah.
What are you saying, Justin?
Well, I'm just saying that it's a request that I think is kind of new.
Our chief proposed to cruiser home.
Yeah, but I mean, this isn't taking the cruiser home. This is, the police chief can use it
Whenever.
to go get a haircut or something. And I think the idea being he could end up responding from anywhere to a call, so that makes sense. Uh, but certainly it will put, if we put it in here and it's used, it will put my heels on the vehicle, but if it's, you know, if he's going to respond from wherever, then I can see that side of it, but.
I mean, I, we did put on that he can use his own vehicle. Um, and we pay allow for, for calls, right, because of the four wheel drive thing. So I sort of feel like that might be covered. I, I'm on the fence on this one, like, I'm okay with it, but I can, I also see the wear and tear on that town's car. I, I don't know how much he's likely to use it.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Maybe he doesn't want, but only this is just what the Police Chief Association puts in there, but it then becomes a question of who's filling the tank. I mean, is the town filling the tank regardless, or is it like a, I don't want to get too nitpicky, but
Right.
we don't want to put anything in here that could put us in tough situation, or at least have some of that clarified.
Further, before. How would we clarify it further?
I'm not certain how you would clarify it.
I think.
Other than you strike the word personal use.
Yeah. Well, the way we had it written before was, um, is it supposed to be used in connection with.
Those words, and that ends that whole thing.
Well, there's no point in that entire section if it's not for personal use, because that's the point of it, right?
No.
No, it's the added words. Oh, you don't have that ready.
Take it to his house.
Right, but we already had that in. For unrestricted exclusive use of the chief of police and all attendant operating men. The first part of the paragraph, it's the, what's being added is the part that starts the chief shall be permitted to use said vehicle for personal reasons. The last three lines, plus a little, is added.
Now that strikes the whole thing.
We could, I mean, I guess now that I'm rereading it.
There's no way to, you're either striking it and clearing your conscience or we're leaving it and it's money.
Yeah. The only thing that we could clarify potentially is, okay, you can take the car home, but that, you know, that's vastly different from you can do whatever you want with it whenever you want.
Well, that's what the first part of this recognizes, right?
I thought it did, but I'm rereading it now and I'm not sure that it does. This vehicle.
Yeah, for unrestricted, even that, provide a vehicle for unrestricted and exclusive use by the chief. So that word unrestricted already supersedes that whole red paragraph down below.
What if we just ask Donna, what's the appropriate wording to allow the police chief to bring the vehicle home, of course, but not
Yeah.
use it for personal use?
Yeah.
Um, and just clarify, and we can also ask Brian if that's an acceptable middle ground for him.
I would think so. It'd be like saying every firefighter has to take their, their truck home.
I just think there's sometimes.
Wait, it's valid.
There's sometimes certainly that, um, police officers or government officials are, are, they're given a car and then that's just their car. It seems to happen more in the South, like you read about these news articles where, like, the attorney general is driving, gets in trouble. Gets in trouble.
Yeah.
I'm waiting.
When they find his car at a motel.
And it's like a, and then it's a government car.
Right.
You know, and the problem isn't that they are using that. Anyway, so we can have that discussion and ask about the proper wording to, so that the police chief can take the vehicle home and respond to his home, but not otherwise use it for personal use. If we go into discipline and discharge, there's a couple small things. May, the police chief may only be disciplined for just cause. I think that's upon proper notice and hearing. I think that makes sense if we all, is there any opposition to that?
Nope.
This lawyer changed agreement to contract.
But he didn't do it in the first sentence.
I know, he didn't do it.
Should I change it there?
He didn't do it actually in a lot of places.
Should we just leave it agreement everywhere so there's no conflict?
I noticed in, like, in miscellaneous, it mentions this agreement a number of times.
But it does say contract at the top, so everything that says agreement should probably say contract.
Good point.
Yeah.
Because it should either be always one or always the other.
The last word of the very first paragraph, top of the page.
So we'll change all the agreement mentions to contract mentions. The principles of progressive discipline, that's a small change.
Where are we at? Where are we?
At the bottom of page four.
Right.
There's a lot of confusion that won't accept that.
Just the S in it.
The town shall institute discipline or removal proceeding in the following manner. I think that makes sense. And that's again.
And then.
And then.
End one, termination for discipline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then ten business days rather than ten days.
Which is a lot more days, but.
Yeah. I think that's, I, I'm willing to accept.
Me too.
Okay, so, section three. This is all new to us. We didn't have anything about this.
Yeah, that's above me.
I, I think that's definitely a Donna question.
Yeah.
I mean, my suspicion is he has those rights, whether we put it in the contract or not.
I'll ask Donna.
But.
Just double check what's on that. So then, if we go to page six, pay details, there's just changing 240 hours for the six month period to 480 hours annually. For pay details, it's the same idea.
And that last paragraph, I'm surprised wasn't in there. Don't you always put something like that in there? If any part's found to be illegal, it doesn't invalidate the rest of the contract. That's.
That's that part.
Right, usually that's in every contract. I'm surprised it wasn't in there.
I gotta steal it.
And then just something about this being governed by the laws and institutions. So we're fine with those two, four and five, unless there's opposition. All right, so what we're going to do is.
I'll send you the changes that I think I filed.
Okay.
Double check a few things with Donna that I have listed that we talked about, and then ask to do two and a half years, delete the automatic renewal, ask to delete the part about getting a raise if other police officers get a raise. Small changes. Ask about the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, double check that we can strike that. And then determine via automobile work, the wording of the automobile section to something to the fact that the police chief can take the vehicle home, but that is not for personal use, otherwise. Uh, change all of the agreements to contracts and then ask Donna about this third party arbitrator if it's.
Section three under discipline and discharge.
Contact, it might be something that basically we're legally required, whether we can ask.
Okay.
Let that aside for today. Old Business Two is this Conservation Commission agent three. So what we've learned is that as long as the agent is paid out of the revolving fund, the select board has to approve the rate of pay, but once the agent is paid out of the operating budget, the COMCOM sets the rate of pay. I think I kind of got my head bit off by the Finance Committee for putting something on this agenda without running it by them first. So I really think that we should go to the finance committee at our joint meeting next week and ask them about this.
About the ConCom thing?
Uh, about this request for a raise.
Okay.
Um, because they say that there's a lot going on with the budget and we need to look at it with a, the whole picture in mind. And it's, I mean, it's a relatively small amount of, of money, but I wouldn't wanna do something without insulting them first.
Um.
Should we ask?
When was the last time? That, yeah, probably. When was the last time?
I'd ask, no.
Agent had a raise. So how old is the twenty-five dollars an hour rate? Right, but when did you start, nineteen twenty?
No. Um, well, I was getting twenty when I was just doing their administrative work and then we hired the agent, which was what, three, four years ago?
Oh, it was only four years ago, okay.
So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask the chair of the finance committee if we can put that on the agenda for next week, even though, now we have a lot of budget to discuss, just to keep them updated. And see what they think as far as what's going in the budget next year.
So how does that get this person any more money this year?
So then, what's gonna happen is, at the special time meeting, we're voting and we're appropriating enough money to pay them at the hourly rate for the hours that they have said that they need for the thirty-five. But I guess the discussion would be if the finance committee and the select board agree to raise it to thirty or keep it at twenty-five or raise it to forty or whatever it may be, that would be what goes into the next year's budget and we would just also keep the conservation commission in the loop so that they know that's what they're getting next year and try and keep it consistent.
I think it would be worth having the finance committee at least offer their opinion also on what a reasonable rate is. Um, I mean, I've talked to a couple of them individually, but as, not as a group, so.
What also Donna recommended, I don't know if it's worth looking at, is a salary and compensation rate table rate.
Right, what would that involve?
I don't know.
I, it, part of the problem is gonna be if you do that, you have to make groupings for jobs and then you're stuck with them. That seems less flexible, although I see that you could only have to make changes in one place, but wow, I don't know what it would involve.
The Dodge is trying to get local towns so that we know what everybody's being paid.
Um, kind of. I haven't explored it enough, but it sounds like instead of.
Sophia and I have been working on that. I have one.
Did we always have those?
Yeah, I have them.
See what the surrounding towns' wages are for different categories.
Yeah, but I think she's talking more about like a step classification.
Yeah, so it'd also be like step raises, like teachers. So you work for five years, you maybe get a raise.
Guaranteed to get this after five years.
It makes a lot of rules and regulations about how much we pay people.
Yeah.
So let's avoid that.
And then if you know.
If you really wanna try to do is to.
Right.
Is to try to limit the bureaucracy and the policy and, yeah. Anything we can do to make it simple to where it's just let the voters speak. You know, we hash it out with the finance committee and then just bring it to them rather than having to automatically kick things in it, just so many years of work.
If we had three hundred employees, it might be something that way, but I'm not sure that it is for us.
So I'm gonna put that on the agenda for next week with the meeting and I'll notify Noel as well if she wants to be there.
Okay.
Um, and we'll have that discussion with the finance committee. And yes, it's a, it's a question about next year, but they have the appropriation for this year, but I hope that they'll be re- reasonable. And if we agree to pay thirty-two or thirty-seven next year, they can pay the same this year. Or up to thirty-five this year. Um. Item number three is, speaking of bureaucracy, is the draft capital planning policy. I think if we look at this blue version, I tried to make it pretty simple.
So is the blue version?
I accepted a lot of the changes that we had made last, or that you had made last time.
Okay.
But I, I made it one less. I just really did not like having two less. I think that people in their applications to change for a capital purchase um, should be dealing with the same criteria that the select board and finance committee administrator are reviewing to.
Okay. I guess I didn't, I didn't, I see your point. I didn't think, I, to me, if I were looking to justify something, the shortlist would be, I would understand what the considerations are, but those are longer and complicated, right? Like, do you need it? Why do you need it? Like, what's it gonna cost you? What, to me, these are the things I would have to check off to make sure I had immediate answers to. The other one would give me guidance of like, okay, have I made my case? So I didn't, I didn't, although they laugh, I didn't see them as repetitive, but I do see your point.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I had made the shortlist. I think I was the one who made it.
You did, you did. I, I just.
Stop.
Yeah.
But I got rid of the shortlist. Um. So just if we can go through these changes quickly, we're not gonna approve this tonight cuz we're gonna bring it up with the finance committee next week. But I just reworded it. Well, first of all, Susan, I accepted most of your changes. I reworded the capital item to a capital item is an item which costs twenty thousand. This is in policy, the second paragraph, all capital items should be included in the capital plan. A capital item is an item which costs twenty thousand for a single item or ten, or a hundred thousand dollars for a project with multiple items costing less than twenty thousand each.
Does that say twenty thousand or more?
No, because if it's twenty thousand or more, then it's, then it's a capital item in some way. I don't even really know what the project.
Oh, I think he means here, uh, twenty thousand or more, because this sounds like it's exactly twenty thousand.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's a.
I was looking at other.
Right, right.
Um, has a useful life of five years or longer and is expected to be replaced within the next twenty years. Yep. Um. I'll change it to read or more. And then I kinda, Susan, I accepted the, the part where you said we're better be in excessive or variable impact and required tax revenue. Um, I changed chairs of different bodies to chairs of multi-member town bodies, so that's councils.
Makes it easier.
Commissions, committees, boards, expertise. Um, and then this was a question that we brought up last time and I'm not sure where we came down on it. Are we going to use these worksheets, the capital improvement worksheet and the capital projects rating sheet or not?
I had said no because I, I did send it out with all the requests and nobody except for Brian.
Brian.
Nailed it out. Um, you know, I think everybody has a pretty good handle on the information that we need and propose, rather propose it in the way that they're most comfortable with.
Okay. I'm fine striking it.
I'm fine with it too. Yeah, I like the multi-member town bodies, it's more, it's shorter and more elegant.
And the finance, so we shall consider the evaluation and priority classification criteria listed below. So this I added in kind of the shortlist. I tried to make sure everything was taken care of. There's public safety and health. Legal requirements. Budgetary effects. I didn't get rid of budgetary constraints, I just wrote it to after budgetary effects. Budgetary constraints, alternative solutions, alternative funding sources. So if there is a capital project, but there's a different way to do it that's cheaper or it can be funded through a grant, we should take that in consideration. Infrastructure needs, efficiency of services, personal impact, administrative needs. And then in community impact, I just added, I thought it was kind of throughout, but never just straight up said.
Yeah.
Consideration will be given to the need that the request attempts to fill, identify the need of the community and determine how vital it is to fulfill this need. How will the project benefit the town and its residents? And then quantity of use, I changed just to add, you know, if it will benefit a thousand people, but how much is it benefiting them or is it benefiting a hundred people, but it's life-changing for them. You know?
And we're, we acknowledge sometimes that it'll be like, you know, a new piece of road equipment. I guess it benefits anyone who lives on a road, maybe? I don't know. Like, sometimes I think it's hard to know, but I still think it's something we have to get consideration to.
Piece of road equipment? I'll share a couple of examples.
That lives on a road. I guess I'm just saying for some pieces of equipment, for some capital leaves, it might be hard to ascertain how many people are actually affected. For others, it will be easier.
I think just don't ascertain how many people is gonna help.
No, I know.
What sort of?
That, that's what I'm saying though. Like, sometimes that's gonna be hard to do.
Where, where it could come into effect is if there's a dead-end road with five people living on it versus giving twenty-three. Giving twenty-three probably is the more pressing, pressing need.
Although, not if you have.
On that road. No.
And you can't go, right?
Well, and then if the road, if the road doesn't work at all, then that's a more pressing need. Twenty-three, you can still drive, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I will bring that, well, to the finance committee meeting next week. I don't know if we'll get to it. They have a lot to explain. Lot to share with us.
And, I mean, in reality, we're, we're progressing on the budget with or without this. It doesn't mean that thinking about it isn't a valuable tool. Um, even just thinking about it can impact how we go forward, so.
Yeah. So. So the next item is we are doing a review of the general government and other budget tags. Do you wanna start with general government or?
General government was on top, so.
Alright, we'll start with general government. So I guess let's go line by line. Five, one, one, two, office assistant request is the same as last year.
Yeah, but that could change depending when we talk about the town clerk. Select Board Secretary and all those different positions, so. Do I just keep it as that until we wanna have that deeper conversation?
So, well.
The likelihood would be we move the numbers around to accommodate it. Different position or would they be likely to change significantly, do you think, in terms of the totals?
I think it would change significantly. It was like what you and I were talking about today. I think if, if you did it where the select board secretary position took on all the minutes and administrative parts for all these committees, I think, you know, safe guess is probably three to four hours a week, so the select board secretary would go to ten hours. And this one would get cut because the proposal for the town clerk up to ten hours would cover the two things that I would add to that job description, the transfer station sticker isn't allowed for this.
So you think you could change the totals?
I think we could probably, you know, add, however you decide to do it, make it just offices as in our select board secretary.
I don't, and I don't mind keeping it in separate lines to the extent that it's flexible in the future.
I think you could cut this in half if, if you guys approve.
The, cuz we need, so parks is like once a month, right? And.
And they, well, they have bills like every, I'd say every two weeks, there's at least one bill to submit.
Planning meets twice a month.
Twice a month, yeah.
And finance is a meeting at two to three times a week, a month, or four times.
Renewable energy.
Planning meets twice a month, yeah.
Yeah, finance meets like two to three to four times a month.
In budget season and then.
Well, lately.
Right, I think in the summer, they probably won't meet as much, but I bet from like September.
Yeah.
April.
What do you think it would average then?
I don't know. We'll, we'll think about it.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, four hours, three to four hours, we probably usually get to done.
FC isn't listed in that list.
Nope.
I don't have them right now. Um. And then the renewable energy working group is added, asked to be added to it.
To admit it's taking help.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any.
Who did?
Object to renewable energy working group, if you don't have any objections and the board is interested, they do record them and.
Yeah.
How often do they need?
They're doing that once a month.
Once a month, twice a month, but.
I think you just have the hard time keeping up with the numbers.
Yeah. Okay. So we're gonna continue to think about that and maybe split it off. It's definitely an area to come back to. Select Board elected statements, that is.
This has a three twenty percent.
What it is. Select Board Secretary is the same with COLA. I think that's something I wanna look at. Um. The hours, I wanna do a analysis, I guess, and see how many hours we have been spending, cuz we kinda put six hours down as a guess. And I don't know how it's been going or not, but let's just look at that. We'll come back to that.
And that's select board secretary.
Yeah. Right now, that's budget for six hours a week. I don't know, I haven't looked at the numbers to know if it's been four or eight or six or two. I don't know. Um, we.
It's a good question.
That was a guess last year.
Yeah, we just put it in because we had to come up with a number.
Um, grant writers, five thousand.
I, I'm just gonna throw this out there on, on fifty-one ninety. I, I'm like, if we, and you guys can totally overlook it. But I, I would put out there that if it comes to the crunch and we're having like worried about the budget being, having to make budget cuts, I would be okay with that stipend not increasing because, you know, essentially, I, we're being paid like two bucks an hour, which is kind of a joke anyway. And I would be willing to say if we're asking other people to take hits, I'm willing to give up the extra a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it is. Ten bucks? I'm not even sure. How much does it come out to be? It's five hundred bucks for all of us, so.
Yeah.
Um. I, you know, I, it doesn't amount to much, but I'm still out there willing to do it.
Gotcha. Um, grant writers, we have at five thousand.
The last three years, I recommended that.
And you raised it last. Yeah, I did. I, I don't regret it though. Um, just, there's, what's out there at the moment in terms of things that haven't, needs that have potentially are there but haven't been met in terms of grants that, like that's.
Right.
Yeah, um, there's potentially one for the fire company and if the guy charges the same as he did last year, it was a thousand dollars.
And then, um. I don't, I think Dennis is taking a break from some things. And then if, I don't know if the renewable energy working group is willing to need help to write that metagrand, so.
They did. Did they not? They submitted.
They did already.
So they did submit the application? I thought they were submitting like a pre.
I can't say for sure, but I'm pretty sure Judy, we didn't, we get a, um.
We did get a bill.
Is that with the seven fifty?
Yes.
I think it's submitted. You can double check it for Peter, but I think it's submitted.
I mean, that's the only thing I see. We, I mean, if we, the MVP, when we renew that, I'm hoping by that time Dennis will be back. And he usually charges about twenty-two hundred. I, I feel if the five is the issues that we're not using.
I'm okay with it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to have when it was there, like when Peter came and said.
Right.
We need help writing this grant. It was very nice to say.
Yeah, we have.
We can fund you. Um, but if we're not spending, then there's no sense.
Yeah.
Okay, town administrator salary, that's COLA. Temp employee, we're being asked to remove the line.
Your expenses, I kept the same bottom line number. I just kind of reallocated based on the spending history.
Over how long?
Um, in the last like two years.
Last two years that we're looking at.
Yeah.
So other expenses is the majority.
Yeah. That's where you guys, you know.
Kind of catch all.
It's a discretionary fund.
Yeah. Okay. Office assistant expenses, two fifty.
What happens to the computers and things? What may get?
You gonna go to heaven?
Taken away and, yeah, I mean, do we get, I mean, it's town property, so how does the town get reimbursed for the, for the potential cost that a computer still has value to?
Usually Tom doesn't take it unless it doesn't have any value and he takes out the hard drive and, you know, we keep that and he just takes the.
The shell.
And, you know, usually he takes it to the school, it's the kid's practice and his IT class on.
They, they don't have.
I think they cost money to get rid of that, that transfer station.
They're, they're more a cost than a value, so if he can let his students, you know, let them break them.
Gotcha. Um, office assistant expenses, two fifty. Grant writer expenses, two fifty. Town administrator expen- expenses, three thousand.
Kinda like booked in it last year.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what are those expenses? Like, is you or me, you're, um.
Well, it gets, well, a couple things.
My procurement certification, it goes into class, other classes I wanted to go to, if I have to go to the county.
Gotcha, okay. Same kinds of.
Yeah, basically all.
So shared human resource director, fourteen thousand.
Um, so this is a weird thing to say, but why are we gonna call it director expenses? It's it's like our share of her salary.
It is, but I think if you call it expenses, it a lot, because we're being charged just a lump sum, it also includes her taking in classes. Any reimbursement.
I think it's just a wider discretionary use.
I mean, that's basically gonna go right to Great Barrington.
I see your point.
So all five towns pay that fourteen?
No, it's based on how many hours we're using.
Eight seventeen percent.
Right, like West Africa pays less cause they're on the.
Postage mailing, twenty-seven hundred, free mailing, two warrants. IT expenses, four thousand, cart, twenty-three hundred, broadband, two thousand.
Do we wanna talk about cha- uh, changing the town bylaws about the mailing? I I I sort of feel like it's good to mail it. I know it costs money, but but I wanna know if we wanna have a discussion about it.
Yeah, no, I think we should mail them. Pe- people saw, I was surprised with the special time meeting. They were like, I didn't know, and the mail's so slow these days. I think that was part of it, but I think it's good to mail it.
Do we, we post it on the town website? Do we? We have the alert system where if you sign up for it, you get updates, right? Could we allow people to sign up to get warrants that way, to be informed that their, the warrant is posted that way? Because that would stop, that, for some people that maybe didn't get it because they're in Florida or wherever, um, that might there might be the people that are willing to get it that other way. They might not, but at least it would be an option.
Well, Melissa did send it out this time to people sign up for general alerts, right?
Right, okay, that works. Alright.
Right.
They, I but I think the alert thing is helpful.
And in the moderate community, the general stuff.
Membership.
So we go, so maintenance type item. Electricity, six thousand, heating, four thousand, water sewer, nine hundred, building system maintenance, three thousand.
Okay, just a question, electricity bills were going up pretty steeply for a lot of people. Are we not worried that that will hit us, or do we already take that into account in twenty twenty-three?
So I did not, I just, I, the six thousand number was based on averaging out what we have spent. Oh, to date, so, like, do you wanna tack on some more because we think there's gonna be a.
I don't know if there are or not, I'm asking.
I have a signed up for the aggregation program and the, um, next solar program, so we get a fifteen percent discount. Off of that.
Have we seen any increases?
I think it's remained pretty, pretty stable.
Why don't we add, we can bring it to the finance committee too, to electricity and heating. We can, it just can be an item with note.
Right, can ask the company. They have any increases coming on to their.
Our, it's schedule, right?
Yeah.
Water sewer, building, nine hundred, building system maintenance, three thousand. Other property services, forty-two hundred, which is asset contractors. Professional services, five thousand for copier maintenance, elevator, et cetera. Telecommunications is twenty-six hundred. Postage mailing, five hundred, custodial, eight thousand. Software licenses, four thousand. Supplies, twelve hundred, other expenses, three thousand.
Just back to building system maintenance, side note, so you guys have, um, there was something wrong with the set that the toilet in the basement was like, something was wrong, it wasn't like.
Wasn't draining?
Flush it in, uh, whenever I came here, I guess, out here where the D box stuff is, there's like a, we have like a little dip in it. And when they, they had a jet flush it out or something, and they said it looked like somebody had poured, um, sheet rock dust down there.
Will we have, do we have any sheet rock work down here?
Nope. They said that's what it looked like.
Yeah.
Um, but Jim did say that because of that little gully, things are getting trapped, and then they're gonna have to fix that in the spring. Replace that pipe, so that number might need to change just a little bit.
They'll do most of the work, right?
Not ever right now, they're, and they're putting a tank alarm on, but of course, the one they got today, grinding out the opposite mix, so.
Memorial Day, twenty-five hundred. We could probably do two thousand or that.
You think? But you spent twenty-two fifty last year.
Well, it was big.
You think it's cause of them?
We can do two thousand. Uh, town report printing.
I actually might be able to go down on that. I've been doing a hundred copies, but I end up with like fifty that nobody takes. I don't know if it's worth going down to fifty copies, if the printer will even let me do that.
Do we post it on the website?
Yes.
Maybe see what the minimum is.
Yeah, I'm not worried. It's relatively small overall.
I just hate to think of all those copies sitting around. Not because of the money either, just because of the paper.
Father. Sue, can you start that one off?
So we got moderator for three seventy-five, seventy-six, which is what, like, yeah, it's just COLA, okay. Constable.
This one, I just, I'm recommending that you remove the stipend because in the past the clerk is paying him to be there, so it's kind of double dipping if you're getting a stipend and getting.
What are the constables duties other than elections?
Posting the warrants.
Posting the warrants.
So I don't know, and. He does, so, but the other point of it is that I don't think he'll be always taking the money in the last two years, so. Um, I mean, he definitely didn't take it last year.
Why don't we, why don't we just keep it because they do have to post the warrants and I know he's not.
Going around to the various sites and posting it? I just wanna make sure, yeah, that's what I figured, but I.
And if they end up working the election, we need one constable or one police officer, right, at the election? They end up working the election, I mean, that's more of a question at that point, right? Whether they get paid or they're already getting the comfortable stipend. I would rather they get the stipend and work elections if they can.
So add three point eight percent to it, or?
Yeah, yeah, right. Everything. Might as well call a constable. Um, schools, we don't really have any control over.
Yeah, nor do we actually know what that brings.
But we did get a letter from the regional school district planning board, just a general update, but we can take that up next week.
We lose veterans this year? We'll lose the half of it.
No, so I'm just making a recommendation on that, cause it's been five thousand for the last couple of years and we haven't spent anything. We could always, you know, do a reserve fund transfer there if we end up having a veteran in town that gets the benefits. But right now, I think it's like heating benefits.
So why aren't they using them?
I'm not sure that there's anybody in town that's eligible or that has applied for it. They don't, it doesn't go through me, it goes to the veteran agent in Barrington. So she lets us know if somebody has come for assistance. We had one person in town for a while that was doing it, but for the last couple of years, nobody has taken advantage of it. So I was just suggesting, you know, cutting it for now and.
What's the most it's ever been used in a year, you know?
So does that benefit have contingencies on it? Like if you're a veteran of any age, any status?
I don't know if particularly.
Is it just used for heat assistance?
I can't say that I know.
I think it's kind, we don't really have a lot of discretion, right? It's just they tell us, this is what.
I recall that there was a, an office of Barrington that handled that.
Right, it's in, it's in the town hall in Barrington, but it's separate from it. The last time we used it was fiscal year twenty, it was forty-eight hundred. And then the most it's ever been was thirteen thousand in fiscal year fourteen. Holy cow, but that was quite.
And that was, and that was because they knew that we were gonna have people, veterans, that were gonna need this help.
No, I'm just telling you what we spent. I don't know that we actually allocated that. It might have been a reserve fund transfer.
So there was the need.
Right.
So what we could do is we.
I think just contact the, uh, the vet, the veterans office and just hear from them. See, see if they think anything's gonna change next year.
It's worth doing. I mean, I, we don't even know exactly what the benefits are for.
Cause it would be a shame to cut it and then find out we need to do a transfer rather than just have it funded.
But it's been so intermittent that it makes it a little awkward, cause they, you know, know either, but there's no, there's no downside to asking.
Exactly.
Yeah, and and it's, I mean, it's the kind of thing you never know.
Yeah.
Happens, so. Veterans assessment.
And so that's for us to actually be a part of the Southern Berkshire Veterans District.
And that's a set fee.
Set, right.
Berkshire Regional Planning Assessment is a set fee.
Correct.
CHP.
I, I left it blank because they didn't request it last year.
Didn't we have the same thing with the O'Brien?
The Brain Center, yeah, that was for several years they didn't do it. CHP was asked, I don't know if they just forgot last year, so I didn't know.
Forget, believe me.
I'm also.
Do we, we.
They have to actually send an invoice. We can't just send.
Yeah, something that we don't call and ask. Veterans, we call and ask that benefit. That was a request. That was just like a request from another organization to assist us.
Well, and also, remember the anti-Aide Amendment? I don't know what, how we would justify it. Have we paid CHP since we've had our accountants?
Uh, yes, and I think this one is justified because when they request it, it it goes to helping welling families or something, so there is a benefit to our residents.
A concrete benefit, cause we can't just give money to nonprofits. It's illegal. Uh, I'm frightened of striking it, especially if they haven't even asked for it. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I mean, I, you know, if they do ask for it, I don't know how I feel, but I don't wanna set money aside in case they might, if they haven't been asking, that seems a little imprudent.
That was for their services that they were gonna come out to the town, like they were up at the firehouse this year doing.
With the van. Uh, I believe that's being paid for through the Public Health Collaborative.
TDD.
So the next four items are debt, so fire truck is paid off, transfer station is paid off. But the tandem axle truck and the library loan. And we have some discretion how much to pay, I think, right? Cause they were just a one-year note.
Right.
But that might be like a.
The lever in the right. I put a million or a hundred thousand in there for the, um, the library because of, I remember Mickey being in there. We should just do a hundred thousand every year.
That's what we're gonna do, and I think the minimum is like seventy or eighty.
Right.
Um, is the fifty-one seven, seven hundred the minimum for the tandem axle?
The last paperwork that I looked at, yes.
How many more years?
That was just a single one right now because I believe you guys were gonna look at.
We did, yeah, we don't, we don't, uh, have actual loans. We're taking out just one-year borrowing notes.
Let me rephrase. How much do we still owe?
It started out one seventy, and we haven't paid anything.
A hundred and seventy, not one point seven million.
No, one.
I just wanna make sure. I know, right?
Well, fire track was on it.
Okay, one seventy, so at that rate, it'd be like a little over three years.
And at some point, too, we can't do the one-year notes indefinitely. I think at some point, we actually need to, uh, sign off the loan. Now, the other loan that's not on here, because I don't think we have to pay it till we get the truck, but is, um, the five fifty that ended up not being a five fifty.
Right, and I think by the time he gets it, it'll be on for next year.
But keep in our minds. Berkshire County Retirement.
Your assessment.
Why is unemployment insurance down so much?
So she had estimated the last two years higher because during COVID, there was a bunch of fraudulent claims of unemployment, and she was concerned that we were going to get hit with them and not have the money to pay for it while we were disputing it, but since we did not I would get, um.
Yep.
Any repercussions of that, she said we could cut it down.
Health insurance.
And that's based on, and so that's going down because, and I don't think, I didn't add. That is going down because this year we had, um, included plans for the two new officers and.
It is a tricky spot to be in because we have to offer health insurance to those physicians. And if we were ever to get someone else working on those positions and want to take a plan, we wouldn't have the money.
I, I, this includes a estimated ten percent increase because when Justin and I met with, right, were you there?
Or you're talking about funds and insurance or health?
No, I'm talking about the health insurance. She had said that they were estimating anywhere between four and ten percent. We usually are on the low side because I think our employees are due with the claims. And I won't get the number until after the, I remember the annual ten meetings, so it's usually somewhere on the first week of February.
My only, uh, concern is, should we, right now that you're just for the people who are using the health insurance?
Yes.
But we have two physicians who are reliable for the health insurance, which is the two po- uh, police officer positions.
Is that the only two? Is there anyone else in town that we have on staff that choosing not to use our home drug?
No, so it, I don't know. I just think it's a tricky spot because you don't wanna allocate money you know you're not gonna use, but you don't wanna have physicians that you don't have funding.
How much would it, how much would one more plan be?
So I usually budget for a family in case it comes with somebody with family.
I mean, you're looking ballpark fifteen, right? Fifteen or twenty, if you just ballpark this number divided by nine.
Uh, right, I see what you mean.
So it's expensive and it would stink to put aside fifteen or thirty thousand dollars that you didn't, you knew you didn't need. But.
No, but I totally see your point, and I I'm just thinking, so the likely, if we have, if it's lower because we have two employees that we recently hired who chose not to take it because they have other coverage, the chances of having to replace both of them in the that next fiscal year is fairly low, so I was thinking if we, cause I see your point, if we add it in enough for one plan, that would give us a cushion.
Yeah, I think that's certainly one way to go about it.
Well, if one person leaves, does that policy end and the remaining dollar value stolen up, kitty?
It might, but those two, well, I guess it would.
Although we're not budgeting for them in fiscal year twenty-four.
Because the two, the reason it's lower is that we have two new employees that are not taking it.
They were in there for the six months of this year, I took them out because they'll have to find the next year. And there was also the change of.
So that, the amount that you show now is what you think we'll actually need?
Based on our current.
Without any question.
Without any question.
Based on our current personnel.
Right.
So it's like, do you fund the physician or do you fund the personnel, or do you meet somewhere in the middle? I don't know what, what accounts do where they have thirty people and they have twenty-five on and five off. Are they budgeting for thirty or are they budgeting for twenty-five? I don't know.
Would be worth asking.
And would any time if somebody decided to take the insurance?
Yeah.
Uh, well, no, that's not true.
Yeah.
So open enrollment is like if somebody was here, unless they have a qualifying event, like they got divorced or whatever, something, had a baby or whatever. That they join then at any time, but if they don't have a qualifying event, it's our open enrollment is during the month of May. So if you didn't join then, you'd have to wait until next May.
But they could, if we have someone now who's eligible for. But they could, if we have someone now who's eligible for health insurance and doesn't take it, they could in May decide they wanna be.
Yes, they could, yes. Which with the particular employees that we have, only one will do that because one is actually getting the benefit because she was married to another.
Yeah, so it's complicated. I, I mean, I'd, I'd really be curious to know i- if larger towns fund all their positions or fund it based on how many they're actually.
Enrolled.
Enrolled.
It's a very good question.
Um, we'll look at that in the future. Life insurance, three hundred, that's not bad.
Not many people are taking advantage of it, but I am gonna check with all the new employees to see if anybody's interested, so. If it does, it's only one from max two hundred.
Medicare, seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty, and thirty-three sixty-three, uh, estimated. And bonds and insurance up to a hundred thousand dollars. So we will meet with the Finance Committee next Tuesday at five PM. Um, and I think we're going to run by the capital plan by them, or the capital planning policy if we have time.
We should forward that to them for them to look at before.
Yeah, I'll do that once I put together our edits. And request to increase the Concom agent pay rate. We're gonna discuss with them, and then I think the main reason we're meeting is to discuss the budget and how we, you know, any areas of, uh, that need further review.
Did you guys have any other ones based on life, thank you so far, that you want to go over that I should go print off or? I'm still waiting on building. I hope he's not gonna give it to me tomorrow. Miles is still a bit unresponsive. What do we do about that? I mean, I can just put it in as level funded numbers for right now.
What does ex- what do the expenses look like out of the tree ward?
That you spent so far? I, I ran into him a week ago, Sunday, um, and he was, he was marking trees and I think he has some dates scheduled for it to fail to come out and do work, um, presumably in this year's budget. If I remember correctly, I think he has thirty thousand left right now, and Jim told me that he did have a bunch of work scheduled. I'm guessing he's gonna use that. He's probably gonna, my impression was that there's probably at least that much work based on just ashbore.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I think he gets, the way that he was talking when he first came months ago, he didn't spend any money that we had for him, but.
Right.
I just wonder, I mean, he's being, if he's actively spending the money, we're just having a little bit of difficulty getting a figure out of him for next year.
I, I think it's that.
I mean, I have departments and stuff like, we need to, we need to meet with Park Commission. They have a lot of requests.
A lot. Who was in that meeting with them?
Uh, Frank, myself.
You, okay.
Yeah, so they have a lot of requests, and more or less, we said, we'll, we'll have to have a joint meeting with them and they can present their ideas and we can go through them. I mean, not least of which is a beach monitor. Which is not a huge mo- amount of money, but five thousand dollars, we're gonna have someone check stickers and need the whole program behind it in excellent. And then a lot of other items, that they know a lot of them are wish list items.
Yeah, but having the discussion is the, is, is a workable thing.
Yeah. So we have departments like that that we need to discuss and, and I think the way, the way the Finance Committee is talking, they kinda wanna go through the operating budget first and then go through the.
Yeah.
The, uh, capital budget. So proposition two and a half under a ballot question, this is pretty straightforward. I'm not looking for us to make any decisions. I was trying to, um, get ahead of the game and not, um, blindside anyone a few months down the road. So I just wanna get some information from you guys about the access capacity and the override that was done a few years ago, and if we want to, it's the Select Board that can do an underwrite. This Finance Committee asked that I postpone for the discussion on that till we've done a little bit more work on the operating budget, and I said, fine, fair.
And I, I felt like I wanna understand prop, two and a half a little better.
Yeah.
So.
But now you have it there.
Now I have a nice packet. Don't have to read it online.
Review known correspondence. We don't have any down for this week. Approved minutes.
So for twelve twenty-one, and I did, in the end, I did send you the, the last one, all three, but it was probably too close to the wire. Well, if you guys are going through those right now, as long as you're writing on the paper, I'll open the other one.
I just sent you the one just heard.
Okay, so yeah, don't, don't, don't hold on the twelve twenty-one. Do the one breakers because, um, the lawyer's changes haven't come through to me and the, oh, God, it was twenty-one.
Okay, January third. Try, you're not here, so I'm assuming Susan will go through this.
Do you know which one's the bridge here? Are you blue and I'm?
I'm blue.
Yeah, I think I'm purple.
So.
Great, okay.
Projected cost for fuel that worked out pretty well.
I always appreciate it when both of us work on something.
Try, Tryon Chief of the Fire Department. That's pretty nice, too.
Okay, well, I think I put Tryon in too, so she's like, or we both click right with it. Doesn't matter.
Um, Article five, I guess it's gonna be, requires some fine tuning. The transfer in sum of five thousand two hundred and fifty, which we all agree that's what that number is.
Yes.
To free cash, or from.
Yep.
Uh, from, yeah, I'll just change it to the from free cash to annual Conservation Committee agent wages account, and I'll delete the red and blue after that.
Okay.
There is also, there is a also.
And strike A.
There is also.
A request that needs to be.
Request from the Conservation Commission to increase agents' wages to thirty-five dollars per hour from twenty-five dollars per hour. Paying the agent out of the revolving fund was not good practice and it was not financially sustainable regardless of the rate of pay and therefore.
Also illegal, but not only not good practice.
Was.
Yeah, right.
And therefore, no account will be, will need to be created to pay the agent in the operating margin. Choose and discuss requests by Concom and the various issues that arose out of the agent and the need for the wage increase. From the health insurance account rather than free cash.
Susan, I didn't get one for the other, the second, I got one through, but I didn't get one for.
I'm gonna change the spelling of Ken's name on the front page because I realized you caught that on the back.
Uh, go for it. I reset it.
The only other item, or the only other thing I see here is Article ten. Uh, amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand four oh five, right?
Yes. I don't know why four oh five that.
They had just gotten it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, it was just Susan's eye at this meeting.
What, uh, uh, is this the old one? Yes. Yeah, okay.
January third meeting. I would move to the approved minutes as indicated.
Second.
If there's not a special vote.
Yes.
And.
You okay, Scott, with that?
I, you're gonna abstain.
Yeah, you wasn't, so. Make sure we don't accidentally take it.
Around twelve twenty-one.
Yeah.
I think I'm purple again.
Purple.
Not sure, but I think so.
So I think, uh, the paragraph, the Select Boards discuss their options about Hume.
Mm-hmm.
The first sentence reads fine. The second sentence.
Problem.
It gets to be problematic, but it should read, I think if I've taken into consideration the changes. Select Board, when I asked for the thirty thousand dollars for the special town meeting provisionally scheduled for January twenty-first, and asked Donna to let them know that estimate has obviously changed prior to their signing the warrant.
Maybe not obviously, maybe just has changed.
Yeah, yeah, has changed. Prior to their signing.
We, we already signed the warrant though, right?
Yeah.
Prior, I mean, was that, was it signed or prior to the, the meeting? Because we could change it on the floor, right?
We could, but I think the request was.
You think it was that?
Changing prior to the warrant, and I don't think we're gonna. I mean, unless like some settlement comes.
Right.
For, obviously. Now Donna did reach out and say that, um, Hume was hoping to maybe schedule a meeting just to smooth over relations between Hume and town.
Mm-hmm.
And whether or not we'd be interested in scheduling that, I said I thought we would be, unless.
I don't see a downside to a, I mean, I mean, it'll cost us money to have a lawyer there, but if we can save ourselves the court case, I suppose, it's worth at least in requiring. Thoughts?
They wanna come and meet with us.
Yeah.
And s- and what, just sit here and smile at each other?
No, I think we'll be loyal lawyer. I don't think necessarily.
No, no, they want townspeople to express concerns that they have about Hume. And they wanna address those concerns and try and be a good neighbor. I can send you what she sent me.
That would be good to know.
Yeah.
Kind of a strange time frame to do.
I kind of, it really is.
Um, I'll send it to you. She hasn't.
Right.
Some actually needs or anything, you know? I mean, in theory, it could be the kind of thing where you sit down and you say, and do a settlement. But I don't, they didn't say that expressly.
It didn't, it doesn't sound like that's what they're intending either, so.
What are, who went down has issues with Hume other than they, the people on the front row? So if you wanna talk to people and see if people have issues.
Well, people might have issues when they have to pay thirty thousand dollars to fight in court.
Well, that's issues with us, not with Hume.
No, it's issues with Hume because the whole thing arises because of their desire to have an R B park that's against our town bylaws.
Yeah, I suppose you could say it that way, sure.
I mean, Hume.
I know I'm playing any pilot, so we're maintaining that road for their.
They're the ones who are procrastinating, who are digging in against our bylaw.
Right.
So.
And we're ma- we're paying for the maintenance of the road despite the increased traffic and they don't pay any pilot. I think there's a lot of people that have issues with that. But whether that can be resolved by meeting the townspeople, like, it's hard to imagine.
Can we bring pitchforks?
Burning torches.
All right, well, I'll send you that, and then she hasn't come back and they scheduled your, yeah, so.
And I, uh, I just wanted to.
What if we draw a meeting and nobody comes?
Yeah, right. We can do it on our unanticipated business, but.
What's that?
Are you talking about special time meeting? No. Um, we can do it on our unanticipated business, but I did have a conversation with some folks at MMA about the Hume thing, so I wanted to pass that in free, but just remind me to bring it up.
All right, let's figure out, let's get these in minutes. Sorry, I got a stitch.
No, that's, that's fine.
The scope of services with the Renewable Energy Working Group. Related Peter, how much for the board about the timeline of the services and actually where, about where private public partners, public and non-private. I, I can then say, top, top page two, I could send, after the private non-profit fire company period, there were also concerns about the April first deadline.
Yeah.
Because this may not be enough lead time for the project to go forward on to this year's annual town meeting warrant.
Yeah, that works. Nothing like watching when people read documents to really, I can't be riveted.
I think I would strike the words a heated discussion.
Yeah.
And then just leave it as discussion and see.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm, so, uh, I'm down to the paragraph that begins, Justin proposed having Gary.
Yeah.
Um, in the middle, Susan noted, I'm not sure how that would actually read now.
Susan noted that the previous town. Clerk. Why doesn't it just read, if Susan noted that the previous town clerk maintained that her nineteen point five hours with additional seven hours clerkship time was insufficient.
That works.
For the previous. So it would delete.
Yeah, the cost of the ass.
And including the town clerk and her. So it, Susan noted that the previous town clerk would change. Not to jump ahead, but.
Where is?
Five Town Hall feasibility study, there's.
No, I haven't gotten there yet. Sorry.
Let me know when you get there.
Yep.
Right there. Probably did a lot of stuff.
I know, then we did.
Article five, are you there?
Yeah.
I would just, uh, the, read it. The board agrees, agreed to remove this item from the draft or as it merits attention for a full town meeting. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. Conservation Commission agent revolving account. I think I have correctly stated. Maybe, I don't know who did, but the revolving account balance is not. maybe, I don't know who did, but the revolving account balance is not to zero. It's, um
It's getting low.
It's getting low. It, it revolving account balance
Is low. Yeah, it's getting low.
It is getting low. That works for everybody.
Yep.
Woods provided emergency expenses, they recommended the town create a new wages account. I think green is like when stuff got moved or something.
Okay.
That's like a high-tech feature. Hume litigation costs town council estimated $30,000. Uh, I would delete the exact wording of the current correct budget account line to be determined by Justin, because it was just that's just like the litigation fees and expenses. I just want to make sure it was into the
That's fine. Delete that last line.
Yeah, blue is fine, blue is fine. Should be clear for the book. Oh, and then the conservation commission gets confusing here because it got moved or something. So this blue conservation commission agent stuff on G.
Did it go to the
I think it's fine, what we had written was fine, so I'll just delete this new set, this section. A little bit confusing.
Right.
Uh, bill of prior year, simple. Transfer 1,500 from clerk office files to actual worker wages. This is really confusing.
Yeah, so it got really confusing and I attempted to get them in that, so I'm not sure it actually is. They, now it says A1, A B2, C3, 4, D5. I tried to put it, I, I didn't even notice it till now, but now I recall that I went through trying to put it in the order of the
Oh, I see.
Warrant, because
Yeah.
It had like, there was a conflict between the posted, um, meeting
And what we ended up
And what we actually had on the warrant, and we were discussing it in warrant article order.
Yeah.
But she was trying to put them in the lettered order of the
Yeah.
Posted meeting.
Yeah.
And it was very awkward.
That's fine. I just think, uh, for this worry, let's get this down. Transfer 1,500
But that's why that stuff got moved, I think, yeah.
Transfer 1,500 from clerk office files to actual worker wages. Period. Melissa met with interim town clerk and provided update about the funding and the hours. Uh, delete the blue stuff. Uh, she recommended transferring 1,500 into the Reestimates that this amount will cover the special town meeting, annual town meeting. And May town election. The actual worker wages account currently has only $120 remaining. So what we'll just do is keep the purple stuff in this section, if that works.
Yep. Okay, right, so the greenest stuff that got moved elsewhere.
Recent the library projects completed and this would serve to keep
Town credits rating strong.
Town's credit rating strong. This may or may not be added needed, but would, but
Would zero the amount of three thousand to fund legal fees for the Hume case? Why is that even
No, it's got really confusing. It should just read, this may or may not be needed, but would zero the balance for this unissued loan authorization if necessary. That's all, so I'll just delete the blue stuff. Um, confusing again.
Yeah.
Well, I think I asked Inspector Bob Krupsky, we're just going to add, has been in communication with the select board, does that work?
Yes.
And it is not yet clear whether additional restrooms will need to be installed.
Yeah.
Installed.
If the pavilion is constructed.
The community center, if the pavilion is constructed. The select board discussed whether or not restrooms would be necessary or quarter parties could be used when large crowds are gathering. Melissa checked with Don Tirico, who referred them to Bob. Was said that the quote for engineered plans came in at 15,500 from Foreset, this information will be reviewed at the next meeting. To some of the office duties minute. We just got to be clear. Melissa presented a request to temporarily assign office assistant minute taking duties to the select board secretary, including taking minutes for the
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that works.
Yes.
The select board reviewed the proposed police detail policy. Do, do, do.
It's a test. All right.
I move to approve the minutes of 12:21 as amended.
Second.
If there's no discussion, call vote.
Yes.
And yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval of minutes as amended. Uh, can you get your signature? And we're into one four. We'll be all caught up once again.
Next up.
Yep. Get one four. So there was a little bit of confusion about the fuel costs. The select board discussed the fuel budget, the current overage and estimate that would be requested for next fiscal year.
It seems like that next sentence should just go away completely.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so the articles in the special time meeting were have been reordered based on cost? Yeah.
So we'll just delete that. Beginning with the highest cost article.
Right.
Justin refused himself to join our plate, Scott moved the
The board accept our plate as written, Susan seconded. So just delete the keys only.
Yeah, it's redundant. Um, Scott moved as amended.
They aren't like, oh, right.
Perfect. Timlock, it was funded for a duration of six, for six months?
Yep.
After the community center, their chance to meet and offer recommendation I received. Town council was corrected. Board of registrar's vacancy update, I just heard back from the Republican town caucus chair.
Okay, so delete committee.
Yeah.
Republican town caucus chair.
Just list of recommended candidates of our register.
Okay. Any progress on that, by the way?
Nope.
Not that I expected you to say yes.
I did.
Right.
I thought it's an easy gig.
Okay.
No, that's why it isn't on this week. I intended to have it on this week and
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I realized once you ask people to do something, you have to give them an amount of time where they decide if they want to do it or not.
Great, that, yeah.
Ten is two N's, but one at three.
Took basler instead of bassler.
And Scott's one and two S's. And Jensen, right? A lot of Jensen's in town.
Oh, Jensen's two S's, right. I'm like, Scott doesn't have two S's, what are you talking about? Never mind.
This is Scott.
Service of two O's.
All right. Okay, uh, I would move to approve the minutes of January 4th as amended.
Second.
Call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect, unanimous approval of minutes. Can I get your signatures there? Unanticipated business.
Right, so I put a call into Mass Fitness Association and got a call back that was interesting and informative and essentially amounted to they don't have a list serve or really any way to communicate, um, with the other towns through the MMA. And they recommended, um, that the town administrator reach out to the small towns group of which he's a part. And that town council reach out to other council through the town councils or legal organization, which I expect Donna already has.
She mentioned Seaton in his briefs.
So I, I thought I would just report to you the result of that conversation. And I did contact Smitty, he said he would give it some thought.
I have a small thing to ask.
Yeah.
A long time ago, Melissa gave me a list of all the town owned properties. And I finally made time to go through all of them. And I have them in the spreadsheet that the assessor, how the assessor gave them. And figured out, okay, what's the community center, highway garage, green park, the cemeteries. Once you take away all that stuff that we all know is town owned property. These are the properties that you might not know about. Well, we know about the big, the 10.7 acres behind Green Park. The schoolhouse we know about, but we have to decide what to do with it. These are the other properties that we could consider selling or whatnot. We won't do that tonight, obviously.
But you're just putting them on record.
Just running out there.
Yep.
The swimming, down by the swimming pool, swimming hole on River Road, we own 1.6 acres between the bridge and where the neighbor owns, like right about where the school bus parked. Including all along by that swimming pool, the black hole. The town owns that side of the river.
It's a nice swimming hole. I like that swimming hole.
There was, that's a lot of, well, we've done compensatory storage throughout that location at different times, in different places.
I wonder how we acquired that property.
It's actually from the, yeah, from the bridge south.
Yeah. It's 1.6 acres and it's only between the road and the
And the rivers, on the waterfront.
Narrow.
Um, the old Point water system is 1.4 acres out of Scott Road. When they dissolved that, I give it to the town.
Scott Road is, but
It's, so you, you go up Sylvan Road, but instead taking a right to the point, you take one of those flats. We own one point. The town owns one point, four acres. And actually, there's an electrical service there. And Jim, Jim took it out of service.
It's Mary Ellen Brown's old house.
Yeah, between that and
Just like right past her property is Scott Road and it goes back into
Yeah, I don't even know if you can access it.
You can't.
What?
No, it's, you can drive in there, Brett and my ass property back there.
Um, yeah, but we own that, which is kind of the 6.6 acres as you're heading
How much is on Scott Road that the town
1.4, including an electrical service. No, but there's a wellhouse, uh, like a 20, probably 10 or 15 feet by 30 feet concrete water. Roofs falling in.
Sure.
But Jim's going to look into that, which is
Interesting.
6.6 acres when you head out towards 123 on the left before the flats there. Like at the flats, 6.6 acres.
Huh, that's a big piece.
Right where the police, like where the fire firehouse that, that pull off.
Before the big field, like the
Before the field.
Field, like the before the field that's before the
Crossfire, the Little Red Cottage.
Before all the fields, across from Little Red Cottage.
Oh, kind of that way over there?
Yes.
Probably, yeah.
Because could they, they're available, maybe working groups, solar there?
I don't know. I, I guess probably not, they want 10 acres or something. But it's 6.6, it's on three phases. It's probably incredibly wet, it's right by the river. It's kind of like, I don't know if it was clear at some point, the woods grew back, it's not good forest, it's more like brushy stuff.
Fine, well, fine.
Um, behind the Hayloft Gallery, two thirds of an acre.
The Hayloft Gallery is the one right on the 57th Junction, right?
Yeah, just two thirds of an acre right behind it.
Two thirds of an acre?
But Dempsey.
Yeah.
Why would we own two thirds of an acre?
And Leonard, the painter.
Leonard.
Yeah.
Or is
I don't know how we got all this stuff.
Two thirds of an acre is a weird piece.
0.4 acres down by the lake off Beaton Road. 0.4 acres, like almost right in the lake.
Huh.
And then 0.95 acres, if you go up
Was that an basement, 0.4 acres?
I think it was, and then the way it was explained to me, the guy who owned it helped, sold the rest of his property and held on to it, thinking he could still access the lake or eventually build on it or something, and then it got tax titled or something. And then 0.95 acres off of Chestnut Hill Road. If you go like right off Chestnut Hill Road, there's the one house on the left. And then off to the right, there was supposed to be a development, I guess. So we own 0.9, the town owns 0.95 acres. And the little piece that we sold to Brad Lupeani.
Which still hasn't paid for.
Still hasn't paid for. And then I'm confused, they didn't come up on this list and there's too many conflicting things about the triangle between Sylvan Road and Tierney Road. So I
Is that, that's the piece that's next to beach kind of?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's moat.
Right, no, but the, the piece that's along Tierney Road and that, that piece there
Uh, one Sylvan splits off
Yeah.
Between Tierney and Sylvan.
Okay.
Where people park.
Where people, the overflow parking that's by, across from where Dean Abaddon's house was. I mean, the house is still there, but it's not Dean's anymore.
So at, at some point we might consider doing, splitting this on agenda and doing something with these properties, but I don't know, just should ruminate on.
It's tricky, some of them are so small that they're not legal
Oh, yeah, I mean, most, I mean, all the ones that would be considered to be selling, 0.67, 0.3, 0.95, 1.4.
1.4, that's almost
Maybe who wants to just offer it to the landlord or the butter?
I'm looking into whether or not we can do that or not, and whether it has to go up top.
Well, it goes to, if it's a nonusable lot, nobody could
That's what I'm looking into, see if we'll be able to We could auction it to a butters, there's probably more than one a butter, right? Like, well, just like why would somebody want to buy something they're already using and they don't have to pay taxes for it?
So Melissa
Well, they can't use it.
By the way, we, maybe we'll, we'll have to consider maybe more, you know, but now you're wearing, uh
Can you send that list?
Yeah. Um, we have to consider like selling or
Could be squat out.
I am concerned about the ropes on this thing.
Yeah.
Which ropes?
At the swimming hole.
At the black hole. Those slippery rocks, now those are a live building.
I didn't know there was ropes on there.
I should
Yeah, they've been there since I was like
Well, it's great, they're probably old and ready to break and stuff.
No, they get cut off all the time.
Yeah.
They're always cut off and people always play up new ones. And the ones on the other side are safer, but
On the property, the property across the river? The, the river?
We'll put it like that. All right, that's all I had.
Uh, and I had, the one other one I had is that, so the town administrator's first annual review is coming up. And I just wanted us to think about how the procedural process that, um, we, we may want to use. Um, and I, I'm just letting you know, so I did look into how Barrington does it. And they have a, a rather large form that I sent you guys today. That Steve Bannon sent me, that all
Never, never got that.
I did, I sent it today.
There, I mean, I was just looking at 5:15 just before I, as soon as I got home, I went online.
Well, I know I sent it to you, so the question would be why you didn't get it?
Scott with two N's.
Yep, so I sent it at 2:31.
Didn't
Scott, Justin, and HR, and it says sent. And it did have the, did it come up for you?
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
But did it have, you need to go to the right Scott?
Scott Jensen. Make sure, I wonder
We're going to print that
At Monterey, Mass. Have it in the room for you. I'll write it right now.
Oh, no, just, you could just put it in his mailbox.
Or just give it to him?
Yeah. Because I had to talk with him beforehand.
With who's name, I'm sorry, with who's name or? With who's name? I'm sorry, with who's name?
Oh, the.
Somebody else?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anyway, so Barrington has a big forum. They do their review actually in open meeting, which I do not believe in that as a process for productive conversations with staff. I don't think it's a right order thing. So I was, and, and I don't know that we necessarily want to use their form. I just wanted you to see it as a baseline for something somebody's using. That's what I said.
The form that they use.
The form that they use, unfilled out. I mean, for one thing, I know that the current thinking in HR is that you never have a, if you're doing a Likert rating scale, you never use an odd number because you don't want people to use the indeterminate. Right, like, if you, if you do one through five, people will tend to do three, which is neither, right, it's like in the middle of the row. By doing an even number instead of odd, you can't do that, right? You have to choose one side or the other. I, I'm not a big Likert scale fan, but that at least helps with one thing, and it has plenty of opportunity for comment. What I'm just putting out there is what, how are we thinking about doing this process? Who should be involved? I, you know, I, I don't know what they're doing in terms of, what do they call it, three sixteen? Whatever. Do we want other department heads? Um, do we want other group, you know, commissions or boards? Do we want to solicit input from them in that process about it? And if so, what do we want to be asking them? Do we want Sophia to be the one coming up with what the process is, or do we want to be involved in it? I'm just putting out there that this is, it's the first ever we've done this and we should do our best to do a good job of it, but I want us to think about what we want to include in that process and how we proceed. If we're not going to do it in an open meeting, do we want that, the meeting with the town administrator to be HR and one of us because we can't do a quorum? Who would that be if we did it that way? So just, I'm just putting out there that we might want to put this on the agenda to discuss and different things that we might want to keep in our thinking to have that conversation.
Yeah, let's, I haven't really thought about it. Let's just talk about.
That's why I brought it up.
Thanks for sending us the great Barrington. I haven't had a chance to.
Well, it's long, so. Well, it's not, I mean, it's not reasonably long, but, you know, anything with a bunch of sections and a bunch of questions. And I thought at least the categories of things they, they're asking about, I think were thoughtful and they asked some things I wouldn't have thought to ask, that I thought were good questions.
Comments and questions from the public. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned at seven fifty-three P M.
Thanks, everybody.